Good evening and welcome to the April 28th, 2022 meeting of the Yorktown Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Gordon Fine. I chair the board. Joining me tonight is John Meistrich, Anthony Tripodi, Bob Fahey, our recording secretary Glenda Daly, and our legal assistant Kira Bruner. First thing we need to do is set up next month's meeting. Next month's meeting will be held on Thursday, May 26th at 6:30 here in the boardroom. If you have to send out mailings for your application for next month, the mailings must be sent out between May 2nd and May 11th. If you send them out before May 2nd or after May 11th, we will not be able to open your hearing next month. In order to determine who to send your mailings to, you take the application packet that you've given at the building department, go to the tax office, tell them you need to do a zoning board application, tell them your address. They'll then show you a list of the names and addresses of those people or entities that you have to send notices to. You write down all those names and addresses on the form that accompanied your packet, and you have to send those notices to those parties by first-class mail with a certificate of mailing. You do not have to do certified mail. Certificate of mailing is only a white receipt from the post office showing the date you mailed it and who you sent it to. It doesn't cost $7 like a certified mail, but it's only about a dollar. So you only have to do certificate of mailing. You also have to post your sign conspicuously on the property and bring with you next or file next month with the building department, the legal department rather, your applicant, your sign affidavit showing that you had to sign on the property, properly posted. Okay, we'll also be doing, we'll go back to doing site visits as a group. So the site visit is going to be held the Saturday before, on Saturday, May 21st. So if we have to come to your property, make sure whatever it is we have to see is accessible and flagged out if necessary. You don't have to be present, but obviously we need access to the property in order to view what we need to view. Next thing on the agenda we have to do is approve last month's minutes. So everything, the minutes were distributed. Any comments, questions? No, then I move that we approve the minutes of the March meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to new business. We have Smith at 2477 Pine Grove Court. Anyone here on that? Application to reconstruct and expansion of a garage with a once, with one side yard of 10.74 feet where 15 is required and total of two side yards of 30.86 feet where 40 is required. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Good.
David Tetro, architect for the, representing the owner. We're just, there's an existing garage there now. We're reconstructing it to make it a little wider, and we're adding a master bedroom above it.
Okay. We'll set it down for a site visit on the 21st, refer it to the building department, and then public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sakomano? Application to allow the installation of a six-foot fence located in the side yard continuing into the rear yard where four and a half feet side yard is permitted at 3566 James Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is not an existing fence?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll set it down for a site visit on the 21st, refer it to the building department, and public hearing next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. See you then. Lerman? Application to construction of a deck with a side yard setback of 10.9 feet where 20 is required at 1850 Blossom Court. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a new deck, or you're replacing an old one?
Replacing an old one.
Okay, so it's not a repair. You're actually putting up a bigger deck?
It is, yes.
Okay. We'll set it down for a site visit on the 21st, public hearing next month, and refer it to the building department. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know what you have to do as far as notices and all of that?
Uh, no, but our architect will probably handle all that.
Of course, you should have gotten a packet from the building department anyway. That explains everything.
Great.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Application for an addition that requires a variance for a front yard of 35 feet where 40 is required, a corner lot, a variance for two side, for two side total of 55.25 feet where 40 is required, and for a fence with a height of 6.5 feet in the front yard where four and a half is permitted at 1498 Dover Street. Good evening again.
Hi.
Okay, so what's the nature of the addition?
The addition is just a living and dining room expansion, one-story.
Okay.
And, well, because we ran into this with the other project that we worked on last time, that there's a six-foot fence along the sides of the house, so we're including that with the, with the application.
Set it down for a site visit on the 21st, public hearing next month, refer it to the building department. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We're going to jump ahead to one, hopefully quick one, because the applicant has to leave. Hadza, want to pull that from the panel? Hadza. Hadza. Hadza.
Hadza.
Application for an addition to an existing garage with a second-story bedroom with a side yard of 16 feet where 20 is required, 525 Hilltop Road. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Joel Greenberg, the architect for the project. As you can see, and I can show it to you on the site plan, very clearly, uh, this is, or actually, turn this way. This is the street over here, and basically what we're doing is we're adding a, from a one-car garage into a two-car garage. So the requirement is 20 feet. We have 16, so we have a four-foot variance. The good thing about this is that code also requires that the total of the two side yards equal 50 feet, but fortunately, the other side yard is oversized, so that actually our total instead of 50 is 53 feet. And basically, that's it. It's a fairly level site if you've been out to the site. And if you, again, if you look at the garage, what we're doing is making it from a one-car to a two-car.
Are you going to connect it?
Yes. If you look at the, um...
Yeah, I see it here. Could you bring it a little closer?
Yes.
Need to have the side.
So basically, what we're doing is, we're adding a second floor, and then on the second floor, we're adding, this is the first floor, that's the two-car garage, this is the upstairs, and we'll have like a bridge, and it'll connect to the master bedroom.
A breezeway, right?
Yeah.
But it's elevated, so it's...
But it's elevated.
Yeah.
Can you show the front elevation again?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Uh, this is the front elevation, so this is the breezeway.
Open space. So there's nothing, so breezeway just goes right into the back. You can go right under it.
Correct, that's correct.
And underneath, it's open.
Yes.
Okay.
So are you going further to the right of the existing, or...
Yes. In other words, we're going, well, if you go back to the survey, uh, if you look closely, this is the line of the existing garage, and then we're going out a few feet to make it a two-car garage.
Right. That's why you need the variance on it.
Yeah, so why wouldn't you just connect, like, use the existing garage and connect it to the house without this second-story breezeway? Like, what's the purpose of doing it that way?
It's something that creates interest. To be honest, the parents want to be working with it.
When you talk, you'll be at the microphone, Joel. That's right.
No, he doesn't want to repeat that.
That's right. That's why I said it afterwards.
Well, yeah, that part notwithstanding, I mean, basically, I guess my only comment is, you know, I don't understand completely why you...
Because he's not, you're not taking, are you taking down the garage?
So rather than, you could make that a two-car garage by just coming towards the house and no breezeway. So it's a little unusual to have a second-story breezeway.
It looks like the, if you don't go out the other way, then you don't have enough room to pull a car around over there without taking out lawn. Right? Is that right?
Yes.
Because it looks like you have a jut out from the side of the house that doesn't give you, doesn't give you enough room to put a full car garage in there, and then you'd have to put more of a cutout in front of the house, which would also change the configuration of the driveway.
Have there been prior additions on this house?
No. This is the first time. First time, uh, the first time that they're...
No, it looks like it could have been way back when.
Yeah, just curious.
No, but it's best to my knowledge.
Because you see, you have the electrical, usually this would have been the end of the house, right? Because you have the chimney, you have the electric.
Classic flat roof.
Yeah. Yeah. Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? As Mr. Greenberg stated, we went out to the property last week. Let me see if there's a memo from the building department. Not there, not there. Is there a memo in the Dropbox? Here it is. I got it. Memo dated April 21st from the building department. They have no objection to granting the relief as requested. Okay. I mean, it didn't appear to me at least that it would have any negative impact on the community. As the applicant said, it'd be an interesting concept.
John, just to allay your fears, we have, if you looked at the property, there's a, a plastic fence along the property line. We've also contacted the neighbor and indicated that they have no objection.
All right. I would move then that we grant the application for an addition to an existing garage with a second-story bedroom with a side yard of 16 feet where 20 is required at 525 Hilltop Road with the usual stipulation that this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of their property line, and that the addition be built in substantial conformity to the, with the plans as submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your proximity where I am.
No problem.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, jumping back to the beginning. Carvallo? Application to subdivide a lot creating two lots under section, under, under the required 10,000 square feet where minimum 20,000 is required at 1681 Summit Street. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
So this is one's been kicking around a while.
Yeah, it's just, it's been lingering, so I'm trying to get it back on track. I re-noticed it, so that, just in case. Essentially, this is a lot that fronts, is a house that fronts on Summit Street with an empty, what would have been a pre-existing 10,000 square foot lot that runs on Front Street. He also owns, the applicant also owns a portion of what was Virginia Road as it budded up on Front Street. I'll show you.
Actually, do we have it on the screen?
No, I don't have it.
I can't see that.
This is the site plan?
Um, so if you see there's an existing house, the, there's, actually, this would need approval by three different boards. Your one stop in, in the process, the other stop would be planning board, because it would be a subdivision.
Usually, planning looks at these before comes to us.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's always difficult to figure out what's the chicken and what's the egg, but, in these, because it also has to go in front of the town board.
Because we have a memo from the planning, the planning department dated January 21st. The application will require a subdivision application to the planning board and a rezone application to the town board to determine if the new lot created on Front Street would be viable. The board requests the applicant submit a subdivision application, proposed sketch plan for potential development on this lot before they can make a recommendation on the variances requested. Then we have a memo from the building department dated January 23rd of 21, saying he needs more documentation, including zoning analysis in order to review this.
Yeah, it's, it, I'll, I'll be back. I know that. So it's just a matter of, it's just a matter of getting it started somewhere and, you know, putting the rest of, the neighbors on notice if they have questions and issues. We'd like to know what they are and address them as early as we possibly can. So they'll be getting notices, a public hearings, both with the planning board and the town board as well. We don't expect you to move on it in any way substantively this evening, other than perhaps listen to comments from anybody that has some concerns, which we would also like to hear as well.
I think these people here like to comment, unless they just want to stand.
Yeah, just a paper.
When you come, I just please you give your name, please.
Hi, I'm Linda Selka. I live at 1618 Summit, which is directly across the street from where the property would be built. We have an issue with rezoning of the lot.
Now, we're not doing the rezoning. The town board, the town board does rezoning.
Okay.
We're only looking at the variance requested.
So isn't that about the size of the lot?
Correct, but that's not rezoning.
Uh, it's sub, it's, what is it called?
It's a subdivision.
Right.
Creating a substandard lot.
Right.
Okay, but what we've been saying before is this has to go before the planning board
First.
For recommendation to us, and it has to go to the town board for rezoning. The town board does rezoning. We don't do rezoning.
So am I like...
We hold the zoning board, but we don't do rezoning.
So it doesn't really make sense for me to be here?
Oh, you can talk to us. It's fine.
And then, if, if I may, what we're looking to do is...
You got to talk closer to the microphone.
What we're looking to do, it would be essentially his backyard?
I know where it is.
Okay, on, on Front Street.
Right.
So there's, there's...
It's directly across from my home.
So you're on the other, you're on the...
16, I'm on the opposite side of Hudson Street.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
All right, good. We, we, you know, whatever concern, we'd absolutely...
Well, my concern is that the lot is...
Oh, you got to direct it to us, though, because...
My concern is that the lot is small. It's too small.
I'm saying, that's why he's here.
Right, exactly. So if you start to resize the lots in the neighborhood, it becomes an issue with the space that we existed, we, you know, bought our homes to...
That's why we're probably last in the list of who this should come to, instead of being first.
Okay.
Because the planning board really has to look at it, and the town board has to look at it.
Okay.
Are there other homes in the neighborhood that have similar conditions?
No.
This is kind of unique?
Yeah, yeah. We, we have, I, I thought that the zoning in our neighborhood, which is R110, I believe, has 20,000 square feet.
It is.
Well, a lot of neighborhoods built when the zoning used to be 10,000 square feet in those zones, so many of the neighborhoods would appear to be 10,000 square foot zoning.
You know, if the lots, if, you know, if, also a lot depends upon when the applicant bought the property also. Did they buy it before the upzoning, after the upzoning? You know, that's something else everybody would have to, all the boards would have to look at also.
Right.
And the, the R110 is residential, single-family, 10,000 square foot lot, so that's...
I thought it was 20.
No, historically, the R110 was 10,000 square foot lots. At some point, the town required that the R110, 10,000 square foot lots, go to 20,000 square foot lots. Your neighborhood is filled with five and 10,000 square foot lots.
Well, in the beginning of the block, in the beginning of the block.
That's what I'm saying is, it's, it's now a requirement of 20, but it wasn't always 20.
Okay.
So we have to look at when the applicant had this property, you know, did they buy it when it was still 10, and did the town change it on them, you know?
Okay.
If they bought the lot and they sat on it all these years, and when they first bought it, it was a 10,000, they could build on 10,000 square feet, and then later on, the town says, oh, no, we're going to do 20,000. Well, what does it got to? You know, I mean, I bought it at 10,000 and I was okay, so that's why.
It's just one of the factors.
It's a consideration. It's not the answer, but it is something that we consider, things like that.
But definitely, if you have concerns, besides bringing it to us, bring it to the other boards as well.
To the, to the...
Whoever, whoever hears it, planning and town.
The next time it comes up, yeah.
Okay.
You'll be noticed again.
You give me my, you give me your name, I'll keep in contact. No problem. I, you know, we're not trying to, we're trying to be very good neighbors, and I know we try to...
Yeah, I know. It's just, you know, when you move into the neighborhood, you don't expect a house to be built, you know, on a property that, you know...
Yeah, this will, everything will front on Front Street, so it's...
On, it's not Front Street. Where, Front Street is, Front Street is...
You got to, you got to direct everything to us.
Summit Street, it's Summit Street and Hudson. Front Street is down here.
Right, this is, this is a lot.
This is 1625 Central.
No, this is, no, this is...
Oh, Jesus.
[Laughter]
That was Summit Street.
That's on the agenda.
Later on. Let me, let me, let me explain something. It's going to be the same, it's going to be the same for that one also.
Okay, so it'll be the same thing, but when you showed the plans, they were on Summit Street.
I show you. Don't, don't.
There's very two similar, there's two similar applications on the agenda.
Let me just show you. I'll show you real quick.
He happens to have, he happens to have both of them.
It's fine.
See, you have Summit here, so I'm, I'm, yes.
So the, this is, this is, this is an existing, single-family house that fronts on Summit Street. This is a backyard that fronts on Front Street. And they, you know...
Oh, on the corner of...
Yeah.
So this is another one.
Yeah, this is, and this is undeveloped. He owns this as well. And if, if you know on Front Street, there's a single-family house that's there that's kind of...
Yes, yes.
It just doesn't make sense. So, and nor does it, just leaving it vacant, but this would have to...
So we're, we're on the wrong, we're at the wrong property now. Sorry.
Listen, unfortunately...
I will hear from you in a little while, because that's coming up.
Unfortunately, we're broadcast live, so we can't edit you out. Sorry.
Oh, yes, you can. Please. Yeah, yeah, we'll see you then.
All right, so...
But we'll see you later.
I guess so.
Anybody else with a comment on this application?
[Laughter]
Okay.
All right, so we'll...
So what we're going to have to do is we're going to adjourn this for more information from the other boards.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I appreciate you guys taking it.
No problem.
Uh, there's a, there's an application at the very end. Wallach?
Yeah.
Yes.
You're going to have to adjourn that as well, because last time I was here, I didn't have a, a site plan as to where the barn was going to be. I do have that now, but if anybody's here, that's just going to get adjourned. So, you know, I'd rather, rather than wait till the end.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I'd like to adjourn it, but if anybody, I don't know if anybody's here.
I'll let, anybody here on the Wallach application?
Oh, all right.
I'll tell you what I'll do. What I'll do is I'll do, I'm going to do your next one, which is your application also.
Yeah.
And then I'll jump to the Wallach one, just to get you out of here. Since that's the last one on the application agenda. So on Carvallo, we're going to move to adjourn to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have the application of Grace.
Yeah.
This is application to allow a caretaker's cottage at 959 Hanover Street.
All right, I don't have plans yet because I'm, this is, again, I wanted to, to...
Not yet.
We start this, my property is about six-plus acres. It's actually two existing lots, pre-existing lots, and I have, almost an empty nester, but I, I got the inkling that some of my younglings are coming back to roost, and I kind of want my own privacy. So I'm thinking, and there's no place to really go around here, and I don't want to leave Yorktown. So the idea is to put up a, I have property down below where I do have an existing barn, and I, so I'm looking to put maybe a one-bedroom little caretaker's cottage down there.
With a garage where the cars are?
Yeah, I might, yeah, yeah, probably right there. But this way, you don't have to bother anybody.
You got to put the van over, get down and work in the morning.
So I, I'm going to come in with, but I didn't want to, it's, it's a big investment. I've done depots already, so it should perk out fine.
So you still need to submit the plans.
I, I was, I just want to get this, again, test the waters, see what the sentiment is.
Okay.
Before I invest a lot of money in plans.
Anybody in the audience have a comment? Come on up.
Come on, Dan.
You got to do it from up here.
Do I have to?
Yes, you do. You got to give us your name, too.
That's the, that's the...
Jeff Conji.
We'll wait to get to the mic.
By the way, you guys look great, other than Zoom, right?
It's not really us on Zoom.
Uh, Jeff Conji, 919 Hanover Street, adjacent property owner. So I'm looking to see what plans...
Were you here way back when, when this first came on the agenda?
Uh, on Zoom, right?
I, I don't remember. So long.
No, no, I was in person.
One of the neighbors appeared way back when.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it wasn't me.
Okay.
But I was on Zoom, and we have yet to see...
But you just said he hasn't submitted any plans yet.
Yeah, so this has been like two years, so we're trying to track it. Well, I do have comments. I submitted them in writing.
I saw them, yeah.
Yeah, you saw them?
Mm-hmm.
Did everybody see them?
They're in the files.
Yeah. Okay, everything, so we'll just wait, right?
Yeah, why don't we, wait till we have the plans and...
Okay, how you doing, neighbor? I'm right next door. It's the, where, it's Hudson Square?
It's the 10th Street.
No, 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 I've been there for over 30 years. How long have you, how long have you been there?
I want to build a chicken coop on that office building.
Yeah.
20 years, right? Yeah, so I've been there more than 30 years. So I don't know where this caretaker cottage is.
He's going to have to give us a site plan that shows where it is.
Where, in the conformance to the zoning code?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, that actually does it. If you give me your phone number, I'll give you a tour or try, try you. Let's wait for the plan. I think it'd be better if we see the plan before we, you know, venture.
That's fine. Okay.
Right? That's the most professional way to do it.
No problem.
Okay?
All right.
Appreciate it.
No problem. Anybody else in the audience have a comment on this application? Okay, I'm going to move to adjourn this one as well to next month, so the applicant could submit some more information. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's jump ahead to get, take care of your last one.
Well, I actually have two, yeah, the, the, and Wallach, but I know Wallach is going to be...
So let's do Wallach, because I know you have somebody here on that, right?
And then he can bring up, there's a young lady.
This is Wallach, Wallach Family LTD, application to allow construction of a new barn accessory building with a height of 30 feet 2 inches where 15 is permitted at 1549 Jacob Road.
Okay, and, and what was missing in the, in the planning, we went in front of the planning board as well, and they had to adjourn it because they did not have, we came up so quickly, actually, on the planning board agenda, that we didn't anticipate the, just here on the planning board agenda before we got back here, but, oh, this is the one that... All right, you know what, I, I have to, he, they, the sighting of the barn on the property...
While you're looking, let me read the memos. We have a memo from the planning board dated April 28th. The applicant has not submitted a plan showing the location of the proposed barn on the subject property. Therefore, the board has not discussed the variance requested. Once the plan is submitted, this item will be placed on the next available planning board agenda. Please adjourn this item until the board is able to review the application. And then we have a memo from the building department dated April 21st. The building department has no objection to the granting of the requested variance.
Where are you going with the plans?
Well, it's just the variance. They don't need the plans.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm here. Yeah, this is...
Yeah. So, uh, the, I, I was not given the site plan as to where it was to be constituted.
Is what you're looking at available on the Dropbox?
No. No, no, because I just, I actually just got this in.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, he owns about, I say, it's about 150 acres, something like that, but, so...
We drove out there last weekend.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's actually behind the...
We weren't sure where in the property was being built. We couldn't tell.
And I, and I couldn't, even if I was out there with it, couldn't direct it.
Because, you know, obviously, you have some, you have some outlined buildings towards the front of the property, but we didn't drive all the way to the back, and want to go down there and then try and figure everything out.
Are there more houses to the back of it?
I don't know what's back there.
It's going where, um, if, if you're looking, if you're coming up Jacob Road, and the[1501.92] and the first set of structures, it's going, it's just going to the.
We went, we went in where you have like the little circle, the circular driveway.
Yeah, and he's got, he's got a lot. This is a proposed storage barn here.
So where's the driveway?
Yeah, driveway's here.
Yeah, we can, we can.
So it's gonna be behind, behind these existing.
Over there, okay.
Yeah, it's behind these existing.
Do you want to come up and see what he's pointing to?
Michael, is this the proposed barn?
Because it's not up, it's not up on this.
Is that the proposed barn?
Sorry now, if you want me to.
Where, where your pen is right there?
Yeah.
So where's, where's the main house?
The main house is here.
Okay.
This is the drive, up, this is the main house. This is the other small barn.
This is the main drive?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
This is where you are, this is these other buildings that are, so.
Where does he want?
He's got it back there. So this is, it's behind these buildings.
So where's, where's Jacob Road?
This is the.
Jacob Road, yeah, it's in front of these buildings, then. This is on Jacob Road.
This is the front of the property?
Yeah, this is Jacob.
No, but this is the barn here.
Okay, so this is his main house is over there.
Right, 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 this is all existing.
So it's, it's right behind those apartments.
Oh, these are the apartments.
Oh, these are the existing apartments, right here.
Yeah.
So where's the barn?
Barn's right here.
So it's behind that guy.
So this is the lawn, right?
And this is the entrance, they would.
Yeah.
That's the lawn. Okay, that's what we were looking at. So it's just to the right of there.
Well, to the left, if you're looking at it.
Well, I'm left. Like, we live like right here. You cross the street?
Yeah.
It's like stepping.
Yeah, that, that looks like.
We drove down it.
That looks to me like a gigantic structure.
It's a, it's a, it's a tall barn, yeah. It's, what is it, thirty-five?
Well, you know, the thing with the structure, when you look at it, is I'm not, I'm not looking at dimensions of the structure itself, but the roof is what the variance is for. It's not the size of the building, it's the height of the roof that we're looking at. So once we get into the plans and all that, then we'll have to see, you know, what the, why it has to be so high.
He could put the structure up there, but he couldn't put it up to that height.
Is this the only driveway that will be there? They're not gonna put another entrance?
I don't know.
No, you know what, I don't know what, I don't, I don't know what his future plans are with the property, but he just is looking for a storage barn.
Does that, the?
Why does it have so many windows?
That's what, yeah, that doesn't look like a storage.
Looks like another apartment.
Well.
I mean, it's got, the ground floor has like the double doors there for, you know, whatever you're gonna get things in, but.
You guys.
We'll get into that when you submit.
You guys in control of.
Once you submit your plans to planning and they go through it, then we'll.
Yeah, the only thing they don't have is the, the site, the location of the barn, that's gonna go.
He's gonna have to come back. He's not making any decisions tonight.
Because planning, planning, I, I didn't have this one in front of.
Yeah, no, I, I know that, that's why I came tonight, because last time there was no information given.
Well, last time was, what, the hearing wasn't open yet. So once, once planning has a crack at it, and they may ask him more questions, he still has to come back here, and then we'll look at what planning recommends and what they say, and then we'll delve deeper into the application.
And just so you understand the application, the, he can, he could do this just with a building permit.
Right, but with a low, but with a lower roof.
For the height of the.
Right, right.
Right.
But he wouldn't be able to get the, the view for the construction equipment.
Unless he had a flat roof or something else.
The backhoes wouldn't have as nice a.
No, it's, you know what, I'm getting, you know, when you get, when you get into rural areas.
I don't know how much extra height the perp or on top end stood in the, in the variance either.
He's gonna have a studio where he can sit and look at his property.
The town, the town, it had a, what was it called, a, what?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The architectural feature.
Right.
That's a similar application.
So you have, you know, you're, you're in a, you know, a semi, you know, rural, um, agricultural community. Barns are open, but the, you know, those, somebody grieved, grieved the fact that somebody was putting up a barn bigger than a house.
Right.
Which is actually common in an agricultural.
Sure, absolutely.
You guys gotta step back to the microphone.
I, I didn't know where on the site.
Right, yeah, no.
This week that it was going, but.
So when, sorry, so when it goes to the planning board, do we get notifications of that?
You should. I don't know if they're doing it as a, an open.
No, you wouldn't, but I could certainly let you know.
All right, so you'll send Andrew.
Because it may not, it may not be a hearing on the matter.
No, because what they do is, they, they have no jurisdiction over, other than just to make recommendations.
Okay.
So the only, the only jurisdictional authorities over this application would be the building department for a building permit.
Right.
And they, when they submit the building permit, they go, oh, you're like, you're, you're too high up. So you gotta go to the ZBA for a height variance.
Right.
Thank God the height variance, all you gotta do is go back to the building.
Okay.
Get a permit. So you, if you want to make objections, you gotta either do it at planning and, and most likely here.
Well, it, I didn't even realize, like, I wasn't here to make an objection. I was here to find out what was happening.
Right, so, and you're welcome, you're welcome to come back next month and find out again.
All right, so you'll be on again next week?
And you know me well, and I know you well, so it's no problem. I can actually get you everything you need. And you could, I'll even give you a mark's number, so I don't, you don't have to get secondhand information.
Anybody else have a comment on the application?
Well, we're just all second to support him for lieutenant governor, but.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to adjourn this to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
Go on favor?
Aye.
You want to bring up the other two ladies?
Yeah, which one is that? Which one is that? Is that Clifford? Mike, is that Clifford?
Where was Clifford on?
Clifford, application, application to allow the subdivision of an existing single-family lot into two non-conforming lots. One of them fronting on Central Street and one fronting on Summit Street.
All right, and this?
And this is at sixteen twenty-five Central.
That's right, sorry.
That's okay.
You've already had a rehearsal.
Yeah, so I guess.
Why don't you guys, one of my comments, have a seat until he at least opens his application.
So this, young lady's point, this is, this is, this, I, I will, quite upfront, this is a substantial request both for the existing lot and what it would be a new lot. And the idea here is that this is a, historically, these would have been two lots. And it ended up being under one ownership, and what happens when the town rezones, goes from an R one-ten, which would be ten thousand, which would require ten thousand square feet per residential unit to twenty thousand square feet per residential unit, these become non-conforming. So the idea here is that the lot that's fronting on Central, it accesses backyard to the lot that's fronting on Summit. And he's looking to put a, to put that back lot, basically, to use as a single-family house. And we would argue that it's in comport with the community up there. I, I don't live too far away. I love that area. I think it's a beautiful area. It was one of the best residential areas in Yorktown. I believe that it, it could, with the right architectural treatment, be an enhancement to the neighborhood. So we would like to, and, and we also feel that these are the, actually kind of residential units that are in much demand and need in the town to keep our kids here who can't otherwise have to move away, can't afford to be here, so that is the request.
We have a memo from the building department dated April twenty-sixth. This type of application for subdivision usually starts with the planning department, and the planning board would then refer to the zoning board. Then we have a memo from the planning board dated April twenty-eighth. At its meeting on April eleventh and April twenty-fifth, the planning board discussed the applicant's request for an undescribed variance to subdivide a non-conforming lot into two non-conforming lots. The board visited the site and does not feel that a subdivision of the subject lot would change the character of the neighborhood. So the planning board has weighed in on it now, basically leaving it up to us what we want to do with it.
Well, yeah, and to, to be very clear, I, I, you know, the applicant would have to go back. Again, this is one where the chicken and the egg, we would have to go back to the planning board as well. And I think that, you know, so, but we, we go to the planning board, the planning board would look at the plans, refer to you to give, grant the variances, and I think that.
What size homes are you proposing?
Well, I, I think that's, I think that's what we need to dial in. I, you know, I, I, I think it could, you know, that neighborhood has all different types of architecture and size homes. And we would want to, I think my client would be very.
Is that what's gonna be addressed to planning?
I, yeah, I think, I think my client would be very amenable to actually dialing in something that would be appropriate for the lot. So it would be a very modest-sized.
So let, let me just tell you what I think our concerns would be. I'm sure the neighbors want to talk also, is you have, right now the lots there have to be ten thousand square feet, correct?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand square.
Twenty, yeah.
You have ten thousand square foot lots there now.
Right.
Right? Because it was upzoned. So if you take your fifteen thousand square foot lot, as it currently, currently exists, you want to break it into two lots of seventy-five hundred each, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
So what you're doing is taking one large, one lot that is oversized.
And creating.
Have a seat, please, sir. Have a seat, please, sir. Sir, you'll have plenty of opportunity to talk. You want to take one lot, which is fifteen thousand square feet, approximately, break it up into two lots of seventy-five hundred each. Now, you take one lot that's oversized for the current, based upon the old zoning, but still undersized based upon the new zoning.
Right.
And then create two substandard lots, under, under the old zoning and under the new zoning.
Right.
So you're making, so you're making two lots even smaller than we have it already, is what I'm saying.
No, no pretense that this is a substantial request in terms of, but, and, and quite frankly, when he first engaged us to take a look at it, I advised him, it's a, that's a, you have a real uphill climb on this one because it is a substantial request on, on, on paper. It, it really is. But when you go out there and take a look at it, it actually makes some sense because this is a, a lot that basically, it's got, it, it, on three sides, it's road.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, so you, so, and it just, you have this spare like land that just sits there. And it, I think, you know, and again, I'm very fond of the neighborhood, and I mean that sincerely, absolutely sincerely. I don't think, I looked at it and said, you know what, this is actually makes, would make some sense. And, you know, and because I think that you could do something, rather than having an empty lot that's kind of just hanging out there, you could actually put it to some good use. I think architecturally, you should control it.
We had a, we had a somewhat similar application a few months back for a property in Shrub Oak, off of East Main Street, which had the same type of argument to it, that, hey, this is just an outlying lot and all the lots are this size, and we denied that one.
Yeah.
Saying just because you have a vacant lot doesn't mean you have to build on it.
Understood.
Now, the question I have also is, you want to create two seventy-five hundred square foot lots in a neighborhood that was basically created with ten thousand square foot lots? How many other lots in the immediate neighborhood are seventy-five hundred square feet? Because the, the planning board is saying, oh, it doesn't change the character, but to me, if you're taking twenty-five percent off of a lot, it's a change in character unless the other surrounding lots are the same way.
Yeah, they, yeah, and, well, you know, in this particular neighborhood, which I'm fairly familiar with, you do have, and actually for sale, a few five thousand square foot lots up there already.
But where are they in relation to this house?
There's one actually on Summit, I think, south of this one. And there's another one, I believe.
See, when you have this kind of layout, this kind of map, could you go back here to what you just had?
Zoom in here.
The neighborhood map?
Yep, going down there.
You just had it up before.
Yeah, she's trying to zoom in.
Yes, the other way, yeah.
No, I'm not, you know, it's, 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 you know, we, we understand what we're asking for.
Right there. Now, that's, that's the neighborhood, so to speak.
So the red eyes, the subject.
And you will, you will have, and you have in the neighborhood lots that range from five thousand, you have very few, actually twenty thousand square foot lots.
That I understand.
And, and this is, you know, when, back in the days, not when I was supervisor, but town attorney up in Mohegan, when they brought sewers in and put spurs on, and put them to ten thousand square foot lots. This is all sewed, watered. You know, so it's not, you know, to me, it's not a stretch.
But could you, could you, I don't, it's, it's not delineated in this particular diagram, but submit something to us that shows what other lots in the neighborhood are the same size or smaller?
Yes, I could, and I.
Are those rectangles, the red rectangles, are the available lots right now?
It says homes that could be built by subdivision, with similar variances.
Right.
This is in the file, too, if you want to see it.
Right, I, I, you know what, I, I, look, I, again, I'm not, I'm not going to suggest that this isn't one that has to have some thought, and I'm not going to suggest this is one that couldn't be, you know, tweaked in terms of, you know, house size setbacks and what may be, you know, granted, I don't think it's, you know, really, based upon the lot, it's three-sided road, I don't think it's a, this one is a complete no-brainer.
So add a curiosity, though. I mean, I hear what you're saying, and, and, okay, I'm thinking about it that way. But go another way. Suppose he was to put a regular-sized house on the, you got two lots, you're looking for two lots. You got fifteen thousand square feet.
Right.
So put it in the middle of the lot. I got a nice big front yard, a nice big side yard, and you put a detached garage next to the, a regular-sized house. That's like, you know, two thousand square feet. Wouldn't that fit the same possibility as spreading it at the two lots?
Absolutely, but I, I don't.
But he's still got fifteen thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, you, you could.
Between the two of them.
Between the two.
One residence.
I thought they were.
Yeah, they're together, fifty is fifteen.
Yeah.
But there's a house on one, on one piece of it already. It's not a vacant lot.
Yeah. And, and the bottom line, let's.
The gray one is, is existing.
Theoretically, you could do that. You could, you could put a, what they used to call McMansion on, on the lot. And that, I, that would be, that would be inconsistent with the neighborhood.
But that would entail taking down the house that's there and you're doing it.
I don't, you know, I sincerely, you know, I, look.
Enough taking down a house, then. Okay, I got you, I got you.
I think you can, I think you can control the impact of any development of that lot by tightly controlling the architectural treatment of the premises and its ultimate size.
When did you claim by the lot?
What?
When was it purchased?
I don't have that information. I'm gonna assume that, you know, for sake of the argument right now, that they're, they're properly and legally merged as one lot. And, but I don't think.
So it's purchased after the upzoning, too?
More than likely. But I, I, you know, the thing is, is I don't think that's the dispositive issue.
It's not totally dispositive, no.
And I think, I think that you really have to, you know, my, my feeling is, look, I, a father of four children with only one left in town, and, you know, we know that, you know, it's, it's very difficult to find, you know, modest-priced and affordable and decent housing. And rather than have government try to dictate that stuff, it's really nice to see that, you know, private, you know, investment may do it and do it a lot better and a lot nicer and a lot easier.
The issue I have with it at this point is that the town, for whatever reason, saw fit to upzone from ten thousand to twenty thousand, but now you want to take something at substandard to begin with and make it more substandard.
Yeah, no, you're a hundred percent right. It may be, may be more appropriate to bring it to the town board, but in a, in a sense that we, I, you know, I've been around.
I'm interested in seeing what's proposed, what size, what size housing is proposed. I mean, I'd like to see what, you know, the artist rendering and give me an idea.
The house itself would probably conform to the setbacks of whatever it is.
Yeah, but you could, you could tighten that up.
What are you looking at, fifteen hundred square feet?
Probably a small house, yeah.
What's, so what's the purple, there's a purple house across, like, on that, it's colored purple? Lighter violet, like, right across the street from the existing house?
That one?
Yeah. That looks like a small lot, but I don't see any driveways or anything.
It's empty property. It's backyard of the house, it's next to it.
Okay.
And my property is the one that's in front of that purple.
What does that say here?
So.
So you're diagonally across?
I am, right, yeah.
With similar, yeah.
So my property is the one that's.
You're on Summit, though, right?
On Summit Street, yeah, right on the.
Why don't we jump to, since, instead of speaking from the audience, why don't we take comments at this point? So if you want to come back up and.
I'm on Summit Street, address.
You're taking over now that we have the correct application?
Gotta get somewhere at one point.
You want to give us your name, please?
Sandy Craig, sixteen fifty Summit. About thirty-five years ago, my neigh, our neighbor built a house, and, you know, we gave him the variance, they built the house. We never had water issues. There was issues with the fa, the father, the parents, how they kept the property. We had an issue.
What kind of issue?
Well, we had, we had an issue how they kept the property. I mean, they had washing machines and things like that outside. It was not kept up. The children do keep it up, the sons, and two brothers.
But it's all on sewer now.
Yeah, but that's, and they're, they're all, we have no problems with them.
Right.
Okay. When we asked the town to come in because we were having water issues, which we never had.
So what type of water issues?
Groundwater, coming in that we never had before.
Okay.
Until the house next door. Excuse me?
You mean into your basements?
Into our garage. We don't have a basement. It's on.
Do you know from where?
Yeah.
You're on, you're on Slab something?
Sixteen fifty Summit.
Houses are on Slabs or full basement?
This is on Slab.
On Slab, huh?
Yeah. So we had court, we had come to the town, we'd asked them about it, they sent a rep up, okay. He said that there was nothing the town could do, we would have to sue our neighbor. We didn't do that. We invested over eight thousand dollars at the time.
Where, but where was the, where was the water coming from?
It's coming through the ground.
But why would, why would the neighbor have any control over that, as I'm saying?
Because it never happened before until the house was built, which was an oversized house.
No, so you disturbed the ground.
Something was disturbed.
The house that's on that corner, you're talking?
No, not that house on the corner, our neighbor, next door to sixteen fifty.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, I don't know.
But it's not the sub, is it the subject property?
Two houses down from the subdivision, is what she's talking about.
Okay.
My concern.
Are there sewer connections for these two?
The one that's on the sideline?
As you said, they're, they're soil.
The next one down, that one, I think. Right.
Anytime you build one, it disturbs soil.
No, no, he's calling it sores.
So the problem is, we put rocks, we put big pipes, we had drainage, we put all of the house, all the side. Actually, this was just the back and the side, and the rocks that we put on the side of the house. My concern is vegetation is gonna be taken down. We're gonna get more groundwater. Something's gonna be disturbed.
Though right now, there's nothing, there's anything on that lot but grass.
Excuse me?
There's only, I think, it's also lawn right now, I think.
There's a lot of trees on that.
There's trees on it, some.
So you're on, are you're on Summit, right across from where?
Down hill. No, we're down the hill.
Down hill.
When, when it rains or we have snow, I have to go outside to the sewer and make a path with the shovel. So the water goes in, when it starts melting, it goes into the drain, into the sewer.
Door.
Yeah, because you can't walk on our, our driveway, and our driveway is not below, you go to our house. You would, our, our driveway is pitched.
It's not woods. It's woods, five trees.
We get so much water that it's all ice at the end of our driveway and our street.
It's the center of the lot.
Right in front of the house, getting in and out. So my concern is water. What's gonna happen, what's gonna happen?
Which is a realistic concern.
There's no way if you know, and also.
But they can, they can.
You're dealing with less than an eighth of an acre now.
You gotta direct your comments though.
I'm sorry, you're dealing with less than an eighth of an acre.
Mm-hmm.
We purchased a house forty-five years ago, we have a quarter of an acre, that was a ten, a ten thousand at the time. This gentleman just bought the property within the last two, three years, maybe?
That's one of the questions I asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, within the last two, three years, I think, cause the, the prior owner passed away. So, right now, you have a zoning of twenty, twenty-eight thousand?
Twenty.
Plus? Okay. This is like, he doesn't want to do it at seventy-five, like you were saying, he wants five thousand square foot. That's what it says in our letter here, notice. Two non-conforming lots per each approximately five thousand square feet, that's less than an eighth. Big difference from seventy-five.
Well, seventy-five's pretty good too.
And, and there's sewer spurs for these two proposed lots?
So now what happens with this water? What happens with a lot of things, I mean, I, I just have a problem with, I do have a serious, I still go out.
Well, that's also what planning has to look at.
Yeah, but they're already, the, the planning board, the, the planning board already looked at it and said, oh, there's no problems.
They have to look at the plans, they have to, they have to, they have to look at the plans of the building.
He wants to rent this property.
I don't know what his intent is, and I don't have to look at what his intent is, because whoever owns the property can do it with one.
They can do whatever they want, I understand.
It's not what the immediate person wants to do, because once it's there, it's there.
And there you go. Once it's there.
That's why, that's why we look at it in a whole, I mean, I, I understand the, I understand the argument of wanting family and people and that, but we always look at it as, as the whole, once we grant it, it's done.
You're chang, you're changing the character of that area, a lot of trees, a lot of vegetation, it's really a pretty area. That between Mosman and, and Hudson and, and Montrose, I'd say it's a really nice area. Down further, the street, there you have houses maybe that are closer. So I do have an issue, once it's made, that decision, we have to live with it, and that's the issue.
Right.
So that's all I'd say. I have nothing against the gentleman, I've met him once, but I do have an issue with this, if there's gonna be a problem with water or anything else. I'm not.
Sir, you wanna make comment? Sir, did you wanna make comment?
I'm not as young as I used to be.
No one here is.
None of us are.
My name is James Francois. I am a, I'm not sure what the legal word for it is, we've just changed our place to a family trust, I guess. I'm a co-trustee of sixteen thirty-two.
We'll just say you own the property, makes it easier that way.
And the address, once again?
Sixteen thirty-two Central Street, directly facing the property at sixteen twenty-five. Our lot is fifteen thousand square feet.
Right.
We look at our living room window and we see the front entrance of the existing property formerly of duty. And now of either Clifford or Gifford, the names have been kinda twisted back and forth.
Take off, I might, I might just take off.
It's.
Clifford, Clifford, like the big red dog.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm not a cat, I'm a dog.
It's a children's book.
Anyway, we have lived in that property since nineteen eighty-three. When we purchased the property, it was as we see it now, except that behind us, on Payne Street, was an empty lot, same size as ours. Foolishly, we didn't buy it, we should've, but we're content with our fifteen thousand. Our home happens to be set at the north edge of our, facing on Central Street, so we don't look directly into the home across the street. But at the behind formerly duty, now Gifford, I guess it's. That is an empty space. It also has a street entrance from Hudson. I'm not sure where that falls, but it's been used by the prior owner as parking.
Yeah, we've been to the lots, we know, we know how it's gonna feel.
So you're very familiar with it. Our thoughts are that if this grant is given to five thousand, or whatever the footage happens to be, I have a space that same size.
That's one of our concerns.
That I could lop off.
Correct.
Plead this is for my children, not build it.
That's why, excuse me, that's why I brought up that we had a similar application in Shruboke a few months back where we denied it.
You know, as Mr. Grace was talking about his children, I've simply mentioned that mine are, one daughter in Hawaii, one daughter lived in Arlington, Virginia, until her untimely death. Our third daughter lives in Wapinders Falls, with no plan to live with us.
Not yet.
So every family's different. The other thing I need to say in full disclosure, I'm a volunteer member of the Yorktown Conservation Board. That has no conservation issue that I can see, it's just simply a piece of vacant property. What I do see is what the ladies before were saying. We're going to open up the balkanization, or whatever you wanna call it, of this very lovely neighborhood into smaller and smaller pieces. I've traveled around this neighborhood for forty years, but I've never thought to look at how many lots could be similarly cut up.
Do you have any idea how many other fifteen thousand square foot lots there are with single-family homes on them?
I don't, cause I'm not a surveyor.
Oh, no, it's just, just if you haven't to know, just from living in the neighborhood.
I'm a retired social worker. This is a picture of our property from Google. I don't know if you have it.
You can put it in the file if you'd like. We don't have it on the file, we can put it in the file if you'd like.
And then there's another property, which is at the corner of Payne and Hudson. I believe it's Loftus, which has a corner property, which also has that vacant corner. So we have a variety of ways of lots that could be cut up into seven thousand five hundred, or even five thousand.
That's what we've been discussing, is all, is setting a precedent.
If the lots get smaller and smaller.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the, uh, the map that's up there, you can kind of see many of the properties would potentially, you know, some, someone could potentially try to do the same thing after, if this one were granted.
If you see on the map up there, the, the, the key at the bottom, the yellow square, says homes that could be built by subdivision and similar variances. And you have several of those on the same street. So, meaning, meaning that if we granted this one, those could be subject to the same type of thing.
Exactly, and that is my point, that we're going to change the character of the neighborhood tremendously by so doing.
Wouldn't say.
So I would ask that this be, can be considered. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anybody else with comments? Anything you wanna add before we adjourn it over for, yeah, you wanna come on up? You gotta come, you gotta come back up though, we make you get up, I'm sorry.
That also devaluates our homes by doing this, making these type of changes, cause behind my house, it's a ranch, there is a property that's not buildable, it's not a buildable lot, and the owner has been trying to sell it for years, forgot what she wanted.
I, I understand the argument about devalue, but it's kind of more of a subjective argument, because we don't know exactly what's gonna devalue a home if you're looking at another house or looking at a tree.
You're going to an area where you.
I know what you're saying, I, I understand what you're saying.
You, you want.
I'm just saying, it's more of a objective, we're looking more objectively than we are subjectively.
I know, but just saying, it does make a change.
That I'm not arguing with you about.
Sorry.
That's all right. Go right ahead.
My property has a, is, is on the corner.
You sure?
It has the lot, what? Yeah, I'm sure. Looking at this, yes, I'm sure, I live there. And so the, the, I do have a, a lot that could be subdivided, um, and so it does set a precedent for the neighborhood if you grant this, because.
Yeah, that one strip has four of those homes.
Yeah, well, I have one, I have one too, I mean, I could subdivide my property, but I won't do it.
Yeah.
Cause it would change the neighborhood.
Right.
We'll all be living on top of each other, and that's not why we move there.
Obviously what we're looking at.
Right, right, so that, that's, everything else you heard before, to say, thank you.
Sure, anything else before we put it over, Mike?
No, I just, I just wanna say thank you, I, you know, I appreciate your comments, I really do, and sincerely, because I, and I mean it sincerely, that neighborhood is one of my, I really always liked that neighborhood, it's a beautiful neighborhood. I think there's an argument that can be made that this would not, you know, change the character of the neighborhood, but it certainly is one of the considerations that have to be weighed by you as the zoning board of appeals, that's what you do. I think that a lot of, a lot of the issues may be mitigated, again, by the size of the house and architectural treatment of the house, and, and with those two things in mind, you could maybe perhaps even enhance the neighborhood.
How long has that district been on sewer?
Oh, God, I, you, you know better, you may know better.
Was it done, like, in, in, well, I keep thinking nineteen eighties, and that? Was it in the eighties that it was done?
It was probably.
I'm at forty-five and had sewers, more than that.
Okay, and how, and how old is your house, when was your house built?
My house was built in nineteen seventy.
Seventy, okay, and it, was it, was it on sewer at the time they built it, you know?
Yes.
Okay, so it was before nineteen, okay.
Our house was built in nineteen forty-eight, it was not sewered, I don't know why, but we have done that since. I looked through the town maps and found one that was quite interesting. It showed aerial views going back to nineteen twenty or nineteen twenty-one, which shows this subdivision. And I would commend you look at it, because it goes from nothing to full, and up to date, up to nineteen.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think they, it was known as a deco plaza.
That's right.
Subdivision in there, and it, you'd be surprised, back then they would say, sell you slivers of lots, they're twenty foot wide, and maybe five or six, you'd take your combined, that's what they would do up in Mohegan Lake, but they, obviously it was R one ten at one time, there were a lot of reasons for pushing it to R one twenty, probably for the unavailability of sewers, and actually the town was under sewer moratorium for about twenty-five years, which I'm very proud to say, at least my administration guys now come underneath that. But, you know, and so they, you know, it's, it got sewer and water, it's, you know, my, my pitch is essentially, it, it's, this type of housing is very much in need for the town. I actually appreciate your concerns, cause it concerns that I think are unreasonable, and I appreciate you articulating them as politely as you have. So that's very much appreciated, I know it's the job that you have in front of you, I can even bring the owner next time around and he can maybe expand as to what he's doing.
I mean, if we had some plans as to what the proposal.
Well, he's gotta go to planning, he has to go to planning also.
Well, so, I mean, he's gonna have to show.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Whatever you.
All right, so I'm gonna move then, I'm gonna move it this way, that we adjourn it to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, going back to the beginning of the agenda where we left off, we have Schworby, which is the application special use permit for new accessory apartment at thirty-five seventy Ellis, that's being adjourned at the applicant's request to next month, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was anybody here on Schworby? If you are, it's being adjourned to next month. Okay, Mayor Hoffer.
What about Tamburula, is that adjourned?
It's already been adjourned.
Okay.
What about Tamburula?
It's been adjourned already.
It's adjourned, I'm sorry.
Application special use permit for new accessory apartment at two seventy-three Carolina Road, you got that file on Mayor Hoffer?
Yeah, I'm still, I'm still stuck on Schworby.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Charles Mayor Hoffer, I purchased the property in November, and I believe the previous owners had a permit for the accessory apartment.
So it's just a transfer?
They said I had to do the whole thing over again.
It's a transfer on new ownership, it's not really a new accessory apartment.
Right.
Is anybody living in it?
No.
Okay. Okay, let's see what we have here. All right, let me go to the building department first. Memo dated April twenty-first, they found no violations and no objections, then we have a email here from Linda McMahon. It's April twenty-first, we received notification, an application renew of an accessory apartment at Carolina Road is up for renewal and possibly is rental property, well, that's usually the purpose of an accessory apartment. As a homeowner on Columbine Court since nineteen seventy-eight, we object to its renewal as a rental, from day one, this accessory dwelling served as a mother-daughter unit whereby elderly parents resided with the family, this is intended use of an accessory apartment, and certainly fills a family need which we welcome. We strongly object that the unit could be approved for rental income, we're a single-family community and should remain that way. All right, just commenting in general on that, just so people understand fully, I think you went through this on a different application last month. The accessory apartment law is not rezoning, accessory apartments are found only in one-family residential districts. It was designed to create lower income or affordable housing, so to speak, and it was designed predominantly to be rental property, which is why when somebody has an accessory apartment in their home, their taxes change to a commercial level tax, because they're now having rental properties, that's really the purpose of accessory apartments, is to create that type of, that type of building. The reason why it was originally built, I don't know, I don't remember if I was on the board at that point or not, I don't know how long ago it was, but it's a permit basically by law in the statute, if the, if the, if the applicant meets the criteria, now this is a previously existing application. Normally on a, if it was a straight renewal, same owner came in, we would handle it by what's called administratively, meaning we would not ask if no one even to come in as long as he sent in the, the, the mailings, there were no objections that we felt were, you know, warranting a denial of it, um, and the building department stated, goes, does an inspection, says, there's no objections, there's no problem, everything's fine, then it's just a straight renewal for another three years. The only reason this gentleman is here is was in the law, also it says that when you transfer ownership to a new owner of a previously existing accessory apartment, they basically have to reapply to get the permit in their name, so that's the reason why the gentleman is here, he's not creating a new unit, he's simply transferring an already existing unit into his name, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Now, are there any problems that you know with the condition of the unit, or, or problems with neighbors or anything?
No, it's got a separate driveway and its own entrance.
How long have you lived there?
I just purchased it in November of twenty twenty-one.
And you said it's empty at this point?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? Okay, given what I just said, given that the building department, given that the building department had, did their inspection, had no objections to it, I would move then that we grant the application for, to, for the permit for a new accessory apartment at two seventy-three Carolina Road for a period of three years, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
What am I missing? Why am I, why am I missing that?
Valentin?
That's the new one?
Did I have it, not have it on this one?
Yeah, that was the one we originally got, maybe it's on this one.
Yeah, they added it on the revised agenda. Is this something we looked at?
Number, would that be number seventeen?
I don't think so, because.
Gordon, last month they came for a variance and the fence was found, so they had a.
Oh, they were here last month?
Yes. They were, and so now the applicant.
They just, they want the fence?
Wants the fence.
Okay.
So we, yeah, bringing it in. Basically, I'm learning.
And we gave them permission to come back?
Yes. It should be the first one.
It was, it was all Bill's idea.
You were here already, I looked up and you were there. Okay, so let me call that one while you're here. Valentin, which is application allowing legalization of a six-foot, six-inch fence located front yard where four and a half is permitted at thirty-four thirty-six Sewellin Court. Okay.
Yes.
Your name again.
David Tetrow.
Okay, so you were here last month on an application for an addition.
What happened was because we were designating one of the, it's a corner lot, so because we were designated one of the bases, or one of the streets is the front yard, it kicked the fence, it's non-compliance.
Right, and that's what came up in the building department memo last month.
And, and yes, and Mr. Gregory, when he was doing the, um, site visits, had picked it up during his, his walk-through there, so the board had said we could.
Mm-hmm, come back if you want.
Come back if we want, or fix it, so we spoke with the owner and they wanted to.
Yeah, I believe last month we said, we put in the decision that you should take it down, but you can come back if you want it.
Correct.
Okay.
So we want it.
Okay. Um, I don't think, speak up if I'm, I'm saying something off that, that I shouldn't, but I think there, no one really had a problem with it last month, it was just a question of.
Defense.
Defense, you know, whether, so, anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? Anybody on the board? Okay, I, it's pretty straightforward, cause we gave you basically permission last month to do this, so I would move that we grant the application for the six-foot, six-inch fence, where's it, front yard?
I don't have it on, I can't look down.
Uh, located in the front yard where four and a half is permitted at thirty-four thirty-six Sewellin Court. With usual stipulation, this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? You don't wanna add anything else, do you?
No, 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 you were gonna subdivide the lot into two, five thousand.
You need two fences.
If I'm not mistaken, I think we marked off where the fence was, and that's the rear yard.
That's, I'm reading the new agenda, it said front yard, but I don't recall where it was supposed to be.
It's supposed to be the rear yard.
Is it the rear yard?
Took it from the memo from the building department.
Yeah, but we went over it back and forth last, last month, that figured out it wasn't really the rear yard.
So it's rear.
Right.
Right.
It doesn't mean a variance for the rear yard.
No, it's a corner, it's a corner lot, so that's, I think that's what Bill's.
Right, so if you have a corner, it's two fronts.
Well, it's a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's the same level, same height.
Just leave it alone.
Quit while you're ahead.
Yes.
Know it when I see it.
Uh, Eliezer? Anyone here on Eliezer?
They're adjourning, cause their mailings aren't done.
Adjourn for mailings, I would note that when we were at the home, we did not see a zoning board sign on the property. So you may wanna point out to them that they need to post a sign as well. Haxari? Application legalize an enclosed porch with one side yard of seven point six seven feet where fifteen is required, and two side yards of thirty-six point two, thirty-six point four two feet where forty is required at eight seventy-seven Taconic Woods Road, good evening.
Good evening.
So last month you were here on two applications.
Yeah, but.
One of them, we gave you back.
One of those is good, yeah, thank you very much.
That's why we adjourned it, to make sure you were doing the right thing. He's just pulling the file. Give us your name for the record, please.
And I'm the owner of eight seventy-seven Taconic Woods Road.
Your, your name.
Nest Haxari.
Okay. And this is just a porch that you're putting up?
Yes.
And it's partially constructed already, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we were there in the sewer.
If you look at the house, something to his side.
Let's see if we have a building department memo.
Yeah, I mean.
How long you in that house, how long you been in there?
Uh, four and year and something, I don't remember exactly, but.
Okay, we have a memo from the building department dated April twenty-first. Uh, no apparent violations, no objection, okay. Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application? You submitted plans, correct?
Yeah.
Anybody on the board have a comment?
Um, so, you're in the process of building this already, what we saw, we went on the site visit and there's a, we went on the site visit and there's a you know, roof and a railing and everything. So it's basically it, right? Like you're just
I just started.
Remodeling that.
So when I bought the house, the deck was there, so I don't I was just starting.
Okay.
That was all.
Okay.
But it's not bigger than what I saw. It's, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is a minor, a minor variance. It's just a porch cover, a covering over a porch of a deck that exists already. Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would move then that we grant the application to legalize an enclosed porch with one side yard of seven point six seven feet where fifteen's required and two side yards of thirty-six point four two feet where forty is required at eight seventy-seven Taconic Woods Road with the usual stipulation that this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line, and that the porch be built in substantial conformity with the plans submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Have a good night.
Jennings? Anyone here on Jennings? Oh, you're here on Jennings, okay. Application allow construction of an addition of a garage and deck where side yard variances are needed. One side is eight point five feet where fifteen's required and total of two side yards is twenty-two point three feet where forty is required at seventy-nine Somerson Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead, remember you're ready.
All right, so
You gotta tell us your name once again. You forget very easily.
David Tetrow.
Thank you.
So
I like doing that.
I'm sorry?
I just like doing that.
Hey, listen.
It's not a rule.
We're, we're at your mercy here.
You're subdividing the lot, is that the one?
Three.
It's the three.
Three. So it's an existing ranch-style home. The owner wants to put a garage addition on with a master suite expansion above it, and they want to reconstruct the deck in the rear of the house. There is currently just a little over thirty-two feet between the corner.
Is that the, the site?
Yes.
So the two shaded areas, which is which?
Yes, the one in the, on the upper right is the deck. That's two upper right there.
Sorry.
Come on, Kira.
There we go.
Okay.
And then the one on the left is the garage.
Okay. And what's there now in those spots?
Driveway. The deck exists. If you, if you look on the, you could see the dotted lines in the back where it says deck demolished. So there's a deck that they're kind of reducing in width along the back of the house, but they're extending it out away from the house a little bit.
Let me ask you so I could recall which house this was, because we went all to older homes last weekend.
I think I know which one we're talking about. Was there previously a garage that was converted?
This is a raised ranch, correct?
Yes.
And the original design of the house is where the driveway is, the garage would have gone into the house over there, but it turned into living space instead. So you want to put a garage there now?
Correct.
Okay. Which is it's the same house as the one to the left of it as you're facing it, correct? Same type of house? But their garage still exists. They still drive
Yes, it's, yes, it originally had the garage where you came in straight off the street and then turned in.
Yeah, okay.
So now they want to put the garage back.
Okay.
So, um
Well, not put it back, but add
Add, add, add.
Others that have to kick out of his living where the garage used to be.
Uh, it's, they have a ping-pong table in one of the rooms and
Can't get rid of that.
No. So I mean, it's fairly straightforward. What are we looking at here? It is Okay, so the it's a seven hundred and twenty square foot garage, four hundred and ninety square foot above. We're kind of stepping this, the second floor back.
Do you have the plans to put up?
Come on, Kira.
Scroll down. Glad to see I'm not the only one.
You can delete everything now.
This, no?
Um, go down. Nope, too far. To the right.
There you go, a little to the right. There we go.
Okay. To soften the front elevation, we're stepping the second, the upper floor back. So the garage is going to sit, the garage doors are going to sit proud approximately about ten feet.
She's coming basically six and a half feet too close to the sideline. Right?
Yeah, we're eight and a half feet to the sideline and we need fifteen.
You're losing six feet.
Sorry, sorry. We need twenty-five on that. Well, listen, it depends on which side you're looking at the fifteen and which side you're looking at the twenty-five. So, um this is the twenty-five side.
So you're going to be able to service the property to the back?
Well, we have, we have close to fourteen on the other side.
Okay, good, right, right.
I mean, it's combined, so, so this would have been the twenty-five side.
Right.
So really, to me, it's eight, eight and a half or twenty-five. Well, I guess it's because
Well, listen, if we threw the twenty-five, if we said, look, let's throw the twenty-five on the other side and put this on the, then the house would be nonconforming. So we kind of had to stick with that. Even though it's fourteen point seven feet where fifteen is required, but that's when the house was built.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have a comment on the application?
So does this, like, from the bedrooms, does it step down that, the second story?
No, 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 it's at that level.
Okay.
It's just the roof that's
Yeah, the roof is just, because, yeah, the second floor is ten feet back.
So it's the crawl space that has a shorter, shorter height.
Yeah, there's a crawl space in the front which either we're going to keep or it's going to be in the garage. I'm not sure what they want to do with that yet, but so the, the front is just, the upper, the second floor is just a master suite addition.
All right, it doesn't appear to be a major variance you're requesting. I don't think it's have any negative impact on the community, the neighborhood. So I would move that we grant the application to allow construction of an addition of a garage and deck where side yard variances are needed. One side is eight point five feet where fifteen's required and total of two side yards is twenty-two point three feet where forty is required at seventy-nine Somerson Road with the usual stipulation, this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line, and that the addition be built and deck be built in substantial conformity with the plans submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anymore? Kaufman? Kaufman? There we go. All right, there's two applications, so I'm going to call them both. This is application for special use permit for a new accessory apartment and application to construct an accessory apartment in a single-family home that requires a special use permit. Apartment is nine hundred and sixty-six square feet where maximum is eight hundred square feet. This at fourteen fifty Maiden Lane. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your name, please.
I'm David Wallace. I'm the architect for my client, Michael Kaufman.
Okay.
Um, my client would like to build an accessory apartment so that his adult daughter can move back home, but still have her own privacy, her own living arrangements. There's very negligible, negligible impact to the outside of the house, basically another front door on the side yard. All of the alterations take place on the inside.
Yeah. I mean, as you know, from probably listening to other applications, we understand that the nature of why you want it or why your applicant wants it, but that's really not the only reason we look at it, is once he builds it, it's there.
Right.
So regardless of who's going to use it. It's not, accessory apartments are not designed solely for family members to live in. It could be anybody.
Right.
Okay. Um, we have a memo from the building department dated April twenty first. No violations and no objections. Now, what's the reason why you need the oversized apartment?
The house is, is, the house plan is very clearly defined by these major modules that
Do you have the plans up on the board?
Yeah, which, which one are you on?
Uh, A one oh one.
There's so many.
Well, take a stab at it, come on. Spin the wheel.
There are a bunch. You'd think there's like there's six of them.
Okay.
And, um the center, this module or, or this area is a double-height entry hall.
You're talking about the front entrance area?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's actually the existing plan. Keep going.
Go to the right. Is the first floor the apartment or the second floor?
Well, both. It's a duplex. So living space on the ground floor and a, and one bedroom on the second floor.
You said one oh one, right?
Yeah. Keep going. That's existing plan. Next one. There you go. Yeah. So
So the dotted lines is the new construction?
That's the, that's the new accessory unit on the first floor and second floor. Because of the geometry of the house and, and because the second floor is the former master bedroom of the original house, there's no really efficient or good way to carve out eight hundred square feet. It just divides very neatly along that line.
And each, it's going to have its own separate entrance, correct?
It's going to have its own separate The entrance is down at the bottom of the page.
And where is the parking for the accessory?
There are four spaces, two in the garage and two in the driveway. If you go back to the site plan, or I can, I can show you.
The two in the garage are for the main unit?
Yes.
So you have service for two cars in the main unit and service for two cars for the accessory?
Is it turnout for the two, other two cars outside?
Yeah, so driveway off of Maiden Lane. There's the turnout for two cars here.
Right.
And then there's the two cars in the garage.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have a comment on the application? Okay, we, there is, there is an email in the file from a Steven Schnupp, S-C-H-N-U-P-P, who is objecting to the accessory apartment. Uh, he states reasons in it. I'm not going to read the reasons on the record, the record. It's part of the record that's in the file, but I'm not going to read the reasons stated here because based upon the nature of the reasons, I can't vouch for the veracity of the reasons. I'm not saying he's wrong or right, but I'm not going to read it publicly into the record unless I know absolutely that they're the truth and I'm not going to ask, I'm not going to ask the applicant this and in any event, it's not necessarily an impediment to the application. Um, I don't know if the board saw the letter I'm referring to, if you want to take a look at it. I don't see the relevance of the remarks. Oh, that's why I said He's reading. Are you reading? I mean, the members of the board have all seen the letter. I don't particularly think it has relevance to this application, why it should or shouldn't be granted. Unless somebody feels differently.
I'm not seeing the connection to to what an accessory apartment.
I have no idea. He's here for the applicant. The owner is here. The owner's here.
Okay.
Technically, the owner doesn't have to be here.
No, no, I know that.
Well, that's why the letter is a little bit
Ambiguous.
Ambiguous is right because it
So, so
It doesn't matter who it's for.
Oh, no, I'm just
But that's what he's saying, yeah.
I'm trying to make sense of this. I'm trying to make sense of this.
That's what he's saying.
Doesn't. This seems to be a bit Yeah, I love how people write stuff. I love how people write stuff, but don't have the brass to come and stand before us and make this, and make that, and say those kinds of things.
So
If it's true. One thing, but to see it in print.
So what I'm going to do is, no one else has a comment?
But this is an owner-occupied house.
Yes.
The main unit.
The main house, right.
The main. Okay. I'm going to move then I'll, I'll do both of these together, but I'll do the first, the, the, the construction one first, because that's really the order it should go in, even though they don't appear the way on the agenda. I would move that we grant the application to construct an accessory apartment, a single-family home that requires a special use permit um, and a variance for the accessory apartment that is nine sixty-six square feet where maximum eight hundred square feet is permitted at fourteen fifty Maiden Lane. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I also move that we grant the application for a special use permit for accessory apartment at fourteen fifty Maiden Lane for a period of three years. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just one question. So every three years, the owner has to come back and renew?
Unless it's, unless he sells the property, then the new owner has to go and make a new application.
Okay.
But this way allows if he's going to have raucous parties and, you know, swing off the chit and the ears, you know, the neighbors can complain, so you give them a chance, you know, so
Sure, it's part of the record.
Sure.
Why don't you take it into the audience with you and read it, then bring it back so I can do the next application in the meantime?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeneo?
Application allow construction of a front porch with a front yard setback of twenty-three feet where thirty is required at thirty-one ninety-seven Farmley Court. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your name, please?
Marcia.
Marcia what?
Uh, Lopez.
Okay. And how are you related to the applicant?
I'm the applicant and representing them.
Okay.
What they want to do is extend their gable. They already have the
Oh, this just comes out over the steps?
Uh?
Over the steps?
Yes, they want to do it on top of the
So you're the architect?
Front porch.
You're the architect?
No, I'm not the architect. Yes. Yes, actually, yes. You're right. So what we want to do is just update it. We want to do a curve appeal. Um, we want to extend the gable and on the rails that they have at the moment, we want to put, um change it to, um was it, uh, composite material? So it's just that, I mean, the only thing is that that that's where
Mm-hmm.
The setbacks.
The setbacks.
Okay.
Because of that.
Gordon, I haven't received mailings or sign affidavit.
No mailings? Did you do your mailings?
No, we weren't aware that we had to send out.
It's close, it's my son.
I had emailed.
So you emailed me, but I didn't get anything regarding, um, mailing out something.
Yeah, I sent it out the day after the meeting.
The only thing I have, actually, give me one sec.
Email I have on file, pull it up.
Uh, yeah, I'm going to pull it up right now. Actually, I have this. What you send me? I have that email. Yeah, you emailed me this, I'm sorry. Yes.
Good, done. You got your, you had it.
You're good.
About the meeting, but an email went out April first.
Let me just see this. Let me just see this.
The Friday after the March meeting about mailings.
Okay, so you have to be able to send the email?
Yeah, it would be at the DVA email.
So if there are no mailings, we have to put it over.
On March. And this was regarding the meeting. I never got anything.
Okay.
Two emails. And this is only two emails I got.
Well, why don't you, why don't you come, come back to the podium? You don't have, did you send out mailings?
No, because I didn't know we have two. I only have two emails.
Very simple to try and just send them out for next month.
Ah, we didn't want to wait.
We can't start, by law, we can't open the hearing without them.
Oh, okay.
So the instructions are right on that, that note right there on the wall?
Okay.
When you have to send them out between?
All right.
And we'll have to adjourn it for next month.
Okay.
Second.
If you're not sure about the procedure, contact Kira and she'll fill you in on exactly what you need to do.
Okay. So I will take a look at that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, what do we got left? I don't know, let's take a look. Okay, I have nothing left, but there are people in the audience. Just watching?
You're night out?
We're admiring everything.
Okay.
Night out.
Well, I'm so glad we had this time together, as they used to say. If you want to ask a question, come up to the podium.
Come on down, come on down. Really, I mean, it's no need for it, but the question is, somebody mentioned about an architectural, uh.
Feature?
Yeah, that, do you guys review that? I mean.
It depends upon what it is. Some, it usually does not, it may need a variance, it may not. That, it just depends on the nature of it.